Well, good morning, everyone. Welcome to the meeting of the Minnehaha County Commission. Before we get started, I want to say happy birthday to Commissioner Barth. It's a very important day. And I was very kind to him. I didn't wait until old business. I just did it right at the beginning. All right, we'll go ahead and start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I think that was because you didn't think I'd make it.
All right, so we have meeting documents available for review down next to Commissioner Heiburger. Just a reminder to silence your cell phones. And Carol is here this morning if you need any listening devices. That takes us to routine business. I consider a motion to approve the agenda.
So move, second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next item is to approve the commission meeting minutes for October 6, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item are bills to be paid in the amount of $4,476,699.23.
Pay the bills.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any comments? Commissioner Barth.
Madam Chair, the biggest bill on this week's is $3.8 million to the state for motor vehicle fees. So that makes it a much smaller number.
Thank you. I know sometimes it's kind of shocking when you see the number, but then, once you start to see it, a lot of it's passed through. All right, so I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item, there are a number of reports there with lots of really great information from the coroner, the sheriff's office, Mobile Crisis Team, and the Highway Project update. I'd recommend all of those for your review. That takes us to item five, personnel actions. Consider a motion to approve the routine personnel actions.
So move, second.
It's a motion and a second. Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Good morning, Jen. Next item is a special personnel action to create a new position classification of lead paralegal at a pay grade of 17 for the public defender's office effective December 26, 2020. Jen.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jen Otts with Human Resources. This is a request for that new classification for lead paralegal in the public defender's office. The position will be supervising five paralegals and assisting the attorneys with the more complex responsibilities of a paralegal. We wouldn't start recruitment for this until later in the year since the funding for it would be effective until 2021 payroll. So if you have any questions on this, I'd be happy to answer them.
Move approval. Second.
Motion and a second. Any other comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
All right, so then your next item is a special personnel action to approve a temporary additional duty salary adjustment for Drew DeGroot, Senior Deputy State's Attorney, effective October 1 through the appointment date of the new incumbent for the Chief Civil Deputy State's Attorney.
It is typical for us to make this type of request for a position at this level, and we have requested a 10% temporary pay adjustment, just to be consistent with how we've handled similar requests for this in the past and how we'd like to handle future requests as this. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Go for approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thanks for being here this morning.
Thank you.
All right, takes us to item six, abatements recommended for approval. There are none. Item seven, notices and requests, there are none. Item eight, planning and zoning, there are none. Item nine, petition for compromise of lean, there are none. So that takes us to opportunity for public comment. Excuse me, if there's anyone here this morning for public comment, this is your opportunity. All right, seeing none, we'll move on to regular business. First item is item 10, Sue Empire Fair Briefings from Scott Wick. Good morning and welcome.
Good morning. Scott Wick with the Sue Empire Fair, WH Land Fairgrounds. Thank you for the opportunity this morning. And we will, am I advancing right here like usual or?
Trish can do it for you either way.
It's a PDF this time. I don't have a PowerPoint. It's a little bit different.
Okay. Well, we made it through our fair and a very different fair overall. So we'll go through the presentation here and we'll start out by talking about the contributions, which mainly hit on our day sponsors. We retained every sponsor this year for our day sponsors except for our Tuesday sponsor, which was Grand Falls Casino. They opted out this year, but they have committed to next year jumping back in. Hopefully, the landscape is a little bit different, but they did say they would be back in as a day sponsor.
We want to make sure we can use that.
Oh, sorry. So the first weekend was premier weekend from Premier Bank Card, our first Premier Bank, Premier Bank Card. Monday was Billion Automotive Customer Appreciation Day. Tuesday, we didn't have a sponsor. Wednesday was Ag Appreciation Day by Touchstone Energy. And then, of course, we had Thursday Runnings Cannibals, Customer Appreciation Day, and the Ag Rules Weekend as we normally do. Special Events was basically due to kind of a stripped-down version of the fair. We didn't, we didn't have Senior Citizen Day, but we'd still had the Ag Appreciation Day Luncheon. And there's a picture there of Bill Zortman interviewing our mayor and Lieutenant Governor Larry Roden. Things we did to differently with the pandemic and COVID-19, as you can see, we had the hand sanitizers that were out. Those are actually tie-outs that we also have with us this morning, Holly Raider with the Agribusiness Division. And those are tie-outs that she possesses to do her shows. And we thought going in line with the ag side of the fair, we had 50 of those hand sanitizer dispensers out of our own, and then the carnival had another 30. And each one of those, when filled, has 1,000 doses of hand sanitizer. So every morning, we opened up with about 80,000 doses of that gel hand sanitizer. So we had a lot of positive feedback from those. They were placed throughout the fairs. Property, we had a lot of food vendors that came out that hadn't done anything all year long, actually had to de-winterize their equipment to come out and do that. We had three carnivals that joined together to form one carnival that were up here in South Dakota for our fair, Brown County, which did a community Brown County festival event, and then the South Dakota State Fair, and then Rapid City Central States Fair. We hired increased staff. We had teams of individuals that just kept continually walking around on anything that people could touch using disinfectant and wiping them down. Every garbage can would got wiped down probably three, four times an hour, all the handles on everything. And we also used a product called KOC-86 that we fogged and coated most of our equipment and railings and in the grandstand with. It was also a disinfectant. The hand sanitizing and all of the techniques were also incorporated into our kids' Fun Zone. So Keith Raymond and Bob Bowman and those individuals would also incorporate that into their act. They had to hand sanitize before they would come up on stage. They did a reduced number of contestants, and then they'd also hand sanitize when they would exit. Touching on some community service, we still continue to do the, we had the Feeding South Dakota Food Giveaway that was out there for two or three months. We continue to do the Faith Temple Food Giveaway. One thing that wasn't in the report last year is we were sheltered after the tornadoes. The Red Cross had contacted us. We'd have some folks that stayed in the armory for a few weeks. And we use the training for the Sioux Falls Police and the cadets and the dogs throughout the year. They do evac training out there with their police cars and then also with the motorcycle As far as fairground changes, obviously, we had everything canceled all the way through July. And we just concentrated on a lot of maintenance and tidying up and getting to things that we normally didn't have time for. And then also with the absence of being able to use the inmates, that was a huge hit when you're used to having six to eight individuals there Monday through Friday, eight hours a day that we could utilize for work. So we just, we were down to our three full-time guys that were outside, and we just kept extremely busy catching up on things and maintaining the property. And one point of mention is that the Budweiser Bridlewood, or not the Budweiser Bridlewood, the Bridlewood Building was torn down about two weeks before the fair. The Art Center was very strong numbers again this year. A lot of people still came out and brought out their exhibits. Livestock was different. We did not have any performance horse shows. About two weeks before the fair, the judges canceled and trying to scramble to get judges, we just couldn't get them filled. And people, you know, they just weren't traveling. 4H was not able to conduct their shows during this year's fair. However, our open shows and FFA were very well attended. So we were actually upping contestants a little bit, and our livestock was about the same as it was last year. So that picture there, we moved the shows for three days into the Expo Building, which worked out very well. We plan on implementing that next year as well. People really enjoyed it in there. It was, it was out of the elements and a different venue on property for them. So the next slide is our expenses for the year, which we worked hard to greatly reduce. There was two nights we were dark in the grandstand and stripped down some other things. Didn't replace some things that had canceled on us. So as you can see, that is just listed all the way down from the grandstand down through the Budweiser Beer Shed for entertainment expenses of $579,233. Overall expenses, when you include grounds and beverage, admin, all the way down through the horticulture and FFA and all that, we had total expenses of $920,651. With admission and campion, admission, we saw we were down about 31% in our attendance, and we had budgeted to be down close to 50. One thing that we felt pretty lucky about is we, compared to the other fairs, and we conferenced a couple of times a week with Rapid City Huron and Aberdeen, we were, to the best of my knowledge, we didn't have any major employers telling their staff not to come to our fair. The other fairs weren't as fortunate. They also had a lot of school districts and a lot of coaches telling their people and their kids and their student athletes not to come to their fairs because of the chance, you know, of it being a big crowd, especially with everything that's going on. So like I said, to the best of my knowledge, I don't know of any employers that told their folks they couldn't come out to our fair, and we didn't have any opposition from the school district. So that timing, with school not starting, we were in a good place to have the fair. Beverage, obviously, everything was down. And the carnival, the carnival was actually pretty excited. They had, their food vendors did better than they did last year. Our Monday and our Wednesday of our fair, for us overall, revenue-wise was the best it's been in the top last five years. However, the days that were down were very, very down. So with everything that was rolled up as far as revenue, we, $891,659. Overall, we had revenue of the $891,659, expenses of $920,651, for net loss of $28,992. So we thought, overall, the board, when we had the meeting, was pleased compared to the alternative of canceling the fair and paying back all the vendors and the deposits that were received through April and May. So it was, it was a good decision to have the event, being down 31%. We feel very lucky that we were only down that much. And one thing we did see is a lot, different traffic patterns. A lot of families came out earlier in the afternoon and early evening when it was slower so they could enjoy the rides, the games, and the food. And then it would transition over to those that came out and enjoyed the carnival and the concerts. So overall, very, very pleased. Planning for next year, like when we have our conference calls with the other fairs, I mean, this one's the mulligan. You throw it out, how do you, how do you know what worked or what changes? I mean, with everything that was going on, we do have enough hand sanitizer for a couple of years that we have and disinfectant. But I will see a lot of people carrying on their diaper bag or on their belt loop and were using their own. But we just, we want to make sure we had enough, so we have plenty on hand and it has a good shelf life. So with that, again, thank you for allowing me to be here, and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Commissioner Heiburger.
Thanks, Scott, for the report. Good report. Can you remember how much our profit was last year? I know the fair did better last year, and then a follow-up.
Yeah, net profit last year, if I remember correctly, was about $139,000.
Yep, that's what I was thinking. And so, and then just to remind our audience that this is a fair report, and this isn't your whole financials for the whole year. There are other things that work into that property. And so, obviously, this is a loss, and this is a big deal.
Right.
But this is just a snapshot of a week's worth of your budget.
Right, we have over 90 events a year, and as far as large events go and repeat events, the Sue Empire Livestock Show is the next biggest event. You know, Carrie Black has flea markets nine, nine months of the year out there, the first week of every month. So there's a lot of events that all roll up into this. But in 2020, with everything that canceled from March all the way through July, obviously, it's going to be challenging. We're staying positive. It's going to be challenging but doable, and I think that once we continue to get through the end of the year, our fourth quarter is not always the busiest anyway. One thing that we are experiencing now is a lot of events that happen in the favorable weather months of the summer that used to be held inside are calling us, asking us for quotes to move to our facility to be outside in the midway because they're just looking into the future, that being outside is going to be a better place to probably have some events. Not saying we're going to get them all, there's lots of competition for property around Sioux Falls, but we're excited about that. So we were just, thank you to the county commissioners yourselves for all of your support, city of Sioux Falls, the business community. We even had sponsors, day sponsors, said whether you have a fair or not, we're going to, it's in our budget and we're supporting you because we do bring a lot of people to Sioux Falls, not only throughout the fair, but throughout the entire year.
Commissioner Benega.
Scott, you've already kind of mentioned the city of Sioux Falls, and I just want to reiterate that what we're showing here today is really the county's proportion of what the fair costs and the revenue that we generate during the fair. But the sales tax that's delivered to the city, if you will, is a benefit to the whole region. And I don't know what we, if we have an estimate on what that revenue is, but if we would take out or add to the short lost, I would call it's not a huge loss, and generate those sales tax revenues, I'm sure we would have an operating surplus.
Oh, definitely. You know, we, like I said, only being down to the 31% and a little bit in attendance was, we were very, very pleased with that. But as, as an overall whole, we are a huge economic impact to the city of Sioux Falls. And we had, Terry Schmidt ran some numbers a while back, and with their formulas and some things changing, we need to get all those ran again. But it's definitely a big benefit to have the property there and have it operating where it is as far as the location with I-90 and I-29 and the proximity to the services and hotels and the history that we have there. I mean, this was our 81st annual, and events come and go, and we bring in new ones. But in July, we had a, excuse me, a Junior National Maine Andrew McKee's cattle show that got kicked out of Ohio, excuse me. And those folks were tickled to death to be here, and it was great to have 800 head of cattle and all the folks that were here. And they didn't advertise, they didn't want to make a big deal about it. But that sampling of those folks that also have other regional shows or national shows to see the building and how they can use it, coupled with the campion and everything we have here, it worked out well. It was a great sampling of what we have to offer as far as Sioux Falls, the county and that property. And then we also had a Hereford show that was there that was unable to operate from Minnesota. And a lot of those were first timers that were there as well. So not everything's a negative, you know? There's a lot of positives that came out from people calling across the country and people that use the facility, campion-wise, and that's aside from the fair. But we had a couple groups of a dozen campers from states that were not able to get out as much, that stayed 10 days in July and were able to shop, go get their hair done, go to a restaurant, do different things. So yeah, not everything's a negative. We have some very good positives that have come out of the show, and we have a great board of directors, and they support a lot, not only by sitting on a board, but physically. Holly runs shows, and Dan Perrings out all the time, and Dwayne, and everybody with, you know, Dwayne with Scott Slumber helping us out with things. Everybody pitches in, and it's not only an advisory management board, but they get in and get physical and help out. So I can't thank them enough.
Commissioner Karski.
Thank you. Scott, you had mentioned one part of your presentation, you know, the city of Sioux Falls and the police department doing training and that type of thing out there. The city's been able to support the fairgrounds by the use of the facility, but they're going to be building their own public safety building and conducting a lot of that training out at their new facility, I imagine.
Right.
Has your board looked at the loss of revenue and anticipated what you're going to have, how that's going to affect your budget?
Our agreement with the city of Sioux Falls is an in-kind trade-out.
Okay.
So they use the facility, and they do a tremendous amount of asphalting for us every year. So as we get close to the, to when that new facility is open, we haven't had any formal discussions about it internally in my office, we have, on how we can transfer that type of in-kind into possibly something different. So they come out and they do, they do asphalting every year for the, for the trade-out of using the parking lot and the west lot for tree and leave drop off. But great question, and yeah, we will be, we will be addressing that more.
Okay.
Anything else? Oh, Commissioner Benega.
I keep forgetting about this, but we have an in-kind support also from Mark Crenns, who runs our buildings, and he spends, I'd say, a significant amount of the time out at the fairgrounds. And he's been not only good for the rest of our campus, but certainly contributes to the fairgrounds campus improvements, too.
Oh, yeah, most definitely. We're, I'm never going to remember everything that happens or what everybody does, but we're on a schedule for checking HVAC units and coming out, and he comes, checks the roof on the Expo Building all the time. So Mark's very organized, very on top, very good communicator. So that's another benefit and refreshing to have over the last two, three years now.
Yeah, takes a team to make it work, and we got a good group of people.
Anyone else? Well, thank you for coming. I mean, thank you to you and your board and the whole team that worked. This was a really heavy lift, you know? I mean, it's kind of a good reminder to all of us, just what all of our businesses have had to do to try to reimagine how they can continue to be viable and to provide a service that people appreciate in need, but in a new and different and kind of challenging way. So thank you very much. Really appreciate all that work that you guys did.
You're welcome. And again, thank you, thank you very much for all your support.
All right, thank you. All right, that takes us to item 11, which is to authorize approval of the second extension of real property lease agreement between First Dakota National Bank and Minnehaha County. Jason Gierman, good morning.
Good morning, Jason Gierman, Minnehaha County Emergency Management. The first item I'm here for is for the lease extension with First National. This is something that we've done through the years. It's a pass-through. It doesn't cost the county any, any funding.
Motion to approve?
To sign that agreement.
I think I had a motion and a second. Any comments, questions? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Okay, that takes us to item 12, which is to consider a resolution declaring a fire danger emergency in Minnehaha County prohibiting open burning.
As you've all known, it's very dry, and we've had a lot of windy conditions. We haven't had any fire issues that I'm aware of with open burns, but due to the dry weather harvest, we've had some issues with combines starting on fire. They responded to lots of fires on the interstates due to throwing a cigarette out. So we're encouraging people not to do that, and, you know, obviously, farmers are aware of their situation, and, you know, they're taking precautions. Late Friday and the week of October 2, I think it was, I was contacted by some fire departments with the concern and possibly putting a burn ban on. So I'm here today to, for you guys to consider that resolution. And in the resolution, just so you know, there's a typo at the end. Last time we did this, you did it for a couple of weeks. If you decide to do it without a date on the end, we'd have to have another resolution to stop the burn ban. Or, you know, we could also extend it so you can have the option of putting it for two weeks, three weeks, whatever you wish, and you can go from there.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Barth.
Would it be possible to make it so that you would be able to end the burn ban without a meeting? I mean, is that a possibility? You know, tomorrow, we're going to have 40 mile an hour winds, and, you know, that kind of stuff along with the dryness is terrible. But it seems to me that we might be more nimble if a person of respected authority like yourself were able to make the decision after the monsoon.
I think I'd look to our state's attorney and see if there's any statute on that that you're aware of.
I'm not, Madam Chair, aware of any restriction on that. I think that the board could authorize the chair upon consultation with emergency management a date certain to declare that terminated. And so we would want to have that included in the motion, if there's a motion that the chair have the authority delegated by the board in consultation with emergency management at the date that that can be implemented.
Thank you. Any comments?
Great motion.
Is there any comments, first, just on the idea of a burn ban? I'm just curious if there's anybody that, all right, we've got dual-in commissioners here. Commissioner Karski.
A couple of weeks ago, I asked you, Jason, about, you know, this, because I drive out to Platte quite regularly, and all the, no, not all of them, but all the shallower ponds are drying up. And if you see a ball of dust in the field, it's usually enveloped, enveloping a combine, you can't even see the combine. It's dusty, it's bad out there. This burn ban, just, we're not, what we're banning is the burning of ditches and weeds and fields and that type of thing. We're not banning the burning of household waste in a farmyard, that type of thing. This is just an open burning out in the field. So just so that everybody's clear about the what and the why. So appreciate you keeping an eye on this.
Commissioner Heiburger.
I think I have to ask a point of clarification to Commissioner Karski before I make my comment, but I think that this does ban somebody's burn barrel, but not if you're having a fire pit, because some, some people have fire pits with wire over the top of them. But I think it bans a burn barrel, doesn't it, or not? Now, now I'm confused.
I, I wasn't aware that would ban a small fire like that. It's more for open burns. If you're going to burn a grove of trees or a large pit, but a controlled, you know, a controlled, there are some more, like Lincoln County has a very extensive and more restrict one right now. But this, you know, this gives a little leeway to people to use their common sense, I guess. So it doesn't also include municipalities. So if you're having a fire in your backyard, you know, that's okay. But if you're going to burn in that example, we still urge caution because, you know, anything can happen, and keep a water source near. But we can certainly try and clarify that.
Okay. Commissioner Heiburger.
Just one more comment. I like to usually, in the past, I think we moved in a burn ban. I voted against it because I feel like personal responsibility is important, but this time, I feel it's different. I've had several examples of one person burning his ditch last weekend when the wind was blowing out of the west in a cornfield across the street, and also a fire barrel within 20 feet of a cornfield somebody was burning, and it's just not a real smart idea. So I think that this time it is appropriate to have a burn ban, just to remind people who possibly aren't thinking about what's going on in their neighborhood.
Yeah, and, you know, the news media is here to make us aware, make people aware of that, and we do appreciate that also, just to get it out there. And hopefully, this answers a lot of questions that I received the last time as far as fire pits and municipalities and things like that.
Other comments, questions? Commissioner Barth.
Well, I would just point out that the gender reveal party they had in California led to a fire which actually killed a firefighter. You know, they had an explosive device that started a fire. But I would also say that the further resolved thing talks about May of 2020.
Talking about in the beginning, though, with the air.
Thank you.
On the resolution.
Got my hearing aids in, too.
Happy birthday.
Well, I'm not sure what the exact resolution should say, but I think there's a consensus that we should let you make a decision, Jean, as to when this would end. So should it say?
Just a second here. I think the state's attorney is trying to tell me something that I'm not getting telegraphed very clearly. I don't, I'm, I'm having the trouble, not her.
That's okay, Madam Chair. It'll be a lost sound, so Carol was just trying to dial it back in.
Oh, okay.
I think we should be set now. I think.
Maggie, do you have any direction about whether the ordinance would cover a burn barrel or not right now?
Madam Chair, I can pull that up. The ordinance is specific as to defining. The ordinance is specific as to defining, one second, Madam Chair, I have to. If I might, Madam Chair, the ordinance states that open burning is defined as the intentional burning of any substance, whether natural or man-made, or the intentional casting off of any burning substance, whether natural or man-made, except the burning of such substance in a container sufficient as to prohibit the escape of any burning substance or any sparks, flames, or hot ashes from the container. And then the ordinance goes on, and if the, perhaps IT could put that up on the board so that the, so that if the, so desired, it's right on the county website. But then the ordinance goes on to say that the escape of such sparks, flames, et cetera, is prima facie evidence that the container was insufficient, so as to meet the exception. And then the definition goes on to say that the maintaining of a fire in any interior fireplace stove or furnace is excluded.
Okay. All right, I think that was really helpful. Trish, I appreciate you looking for that, but I'm not sure that, does anybody feel they need to, to see that language after Maggie's been able to read it to us? So the ordinance prohibits any open fire unless it's in a container that's sufficient to control the embers and things flying out of that. So it would address Commissioner Heiburger's example where somebody was burning in a burn barrel but was allowing embers to escape from that burn barrel and putting at risk of a field of corn that's being harvested right by there. So I think that's where our personal responsibility comes in, is that, you know, we, we pass a burn ban to help everybody understand the severity of the situation. We rely on our firefighters who are out all across the county to monitor those conditions. They've requested this. And so, just by passing the burn ban, it, it heightens the awareness, and we will do what we can with the, the aid of media to get the word out to folks, so everybody is aware of this burn ban. But the way the ordinance is drafted, you will be able to have fires in fire pits or fires in burn barrels, provided you monitor those and make sure that no embers escape. And that, you know, it's a real temptation right now, as the weather's getting cooler, and we're all wanting to continue to be outside for COVID safety reasons and things, but we really need to be very careful about that. Commissioner Heiburger.
One more addition to that, that this is exclusive of incorporated municipalities within the counties. So if you live in an incorporated area, this ban does not apply to you. That's your municipality's responsibility.
Commissioner Benega.
So if we just change the last sentence of this resolution and say it's effective immediately and shall continue in force and effect until the chairperson of the county commissioner sends it?
Yeah, in consultation with the emergency management director, maybe? All right, so is that a motion?
Yes.
All right. A motion in multiple seconds?
Madam Chair, I'd just comment that there are many causes of fire, and we are so dry right now, you know, even a house fire could lead to a conflagration that, you know, burns whole cornfields, and railroads often spark grass fires. We have enough fires without starting them on purpose, so be cautious, let's not have any.
Okay, thank you. So Olivia, I'm going to ask you a question, because you normally provide me this wonderful cheat sheet, so I know what I'm supposed to do, and this, today we thought we, we might have a commissioner absent, so I had a roll call vote for everything. Do I need a roll call vote on this one?
Yes, please.
Yes, okay, that's what I thought, just wanted to make sure. All right, roll call vote, please.
I think we have to have a resolution on the change first, a resolution on.
Okay, so we have a motion to change the resolution? All right, so we have a motion to change the resolution in a second, and we have a roll call vote on that motion. Barth?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Bender? Aye, thank you. So now I need a motion to approve the burn ban resolution as amended.
So moved.
And a second, roll call vote, please. Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Bender? Aye, motion passes unanimously, thank you. Thank you very much, Jason. All right, that takes us to item 13, which is to declare the JDC 2007 Chevy Malibu surplus. Jamie Gravitt. Oh, hi, Jamie, thanks for joining on Zoom.
Hi, Commissioner, Jamie Gravitt, JDC. Normally, we would do this as part of the city auction that they do in September, but with COVID changes, they did things differently. So I'm requesting that we surplus this vehicle so that I can dispose of it prior to the snow season and plowing of our parking lot.
Make a motion to declare that vehicle surplus.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any comments, questions? Roll call vote, Olivia? Heiburger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Bender? Aye, motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Jamie, thanks for being with us.
Thank you.
All right, that takes us to item 14, liaison reports. Are there any liaison reports this morning? I would just note that the Building Committee Subcommittee that's working on the remodel of the administration and extension building did meet last Thursday. We spent a full day in interviews with four different architects. We had great presentations, really appreciated all the work and effort that the folks put in, that were able to present to us. And we're not yet at a position where we can publicly announce who we've chosen, but we are working towards that goal. So it was, it was a good, good, long day. So, yeah. Anything else? All right, new business, is there any new business?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Barth.
I just, a citizen contacted me about voting, and if you're registered to vote, you can vote, even if you don't have your driver's license with you. It's a question of, you know, if you're registered, they'll, they'll take your word for it at the time, and obviously, not more than one of me can vote. I talked to Bob before this, and he said you have to do a, they hold your ballot separately, but just because you don't have your driver's license doesn't mean you can't vote if you are a registered voter. And I don't want anyone to be discouraged from voting because they don't have a driver's license with them.
Thank you, thanks for that important information. All right, other new business or old business? Any old business?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Barth.
I made it.
Congrats. I would also note under old business that last week we talked about face masks in our meeting, and we did have a department head meeting that afternoon, got a lot of good feedback on that, and people were generally very supportive of requiring face masks in, inside county buildings when you're away from your primary work desk. And from everything, I've heard things have been, people have been quite compliant with doing that. We continue to see a rise in COVID cases in our community. I, I doubt there's anybody anymore who hasn't known at least somebody who's come down with COVID, and, you know, even the people who aren't, you know, sick enough to be hospitalized, it's, it's directly affecting workplaces and schools, and, you know, we've seen schools that have had to cancel because they didn't have enough teachers to teach classes. And so we just, just a reminder to everybody to, to continue to exercise the personal responsibility that we talk about quite a bit, and do everything that you can to keep yourself and your coworkers healthy, your families healthy, so that we can continue to have an open economy, continue to be a place that people want to travel to so they can get their haircut, and, you know, things like that, that we all just take for granted every day. And that's why Commissioner Barth always looks so sharp, because he can always get his haircut anytime he wants. So I just want to remind people about that. And then I also wanted to remind people, we, we had accepted the auditor's resignation effective at the end of this year, and we now have posted that position, so it's out there for anybody who might be interested. We were, we really are very hopeful that we would be able to attract several or a number of really highly qualified candidates for that extremely important job, job that affects every single citizen in Minnehaha County every day of the year, not just during elections, but, you know, every day of the year, they're critical for our financial operations. So I just wanted to let everybody know that that was out there, and it'll be posted for 30 days. Anything else? All right, if not, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, everyone, thanks for coming this morning.